Much. The next item on the agenda is under general business. And that is to receive a presentation, ask questions and consider providing direction to staff on issues related to Project Home Key or other issues related to homeless encampments. The presentations that will be made is by Opening Doors Marin and the County of Marin. So Adam, did you want to introduce this item?
Yes, yes. Yes, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And so this was generated by an item that I brought to the council last two weeks ago. Council did decide to place this item on the agenda. And I'd like Adam to introduce the speakers.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. This also serves as our standing agenda item tonight for this issue as it relates to homelessness. But with us tonight, folks that have presented with us before and our our partners in this effort. Ashley Hart McIntyre with the County of Marin is, I would say, leads or is on the tip of the spear on all things homelessness for the County of Marin. And we work with her nearly daily in those services. And of course, Andrew Henning is promoting Doors Marin is with us as well. And who has been engaged in this effort for the last four or five years in Marin County. And also an expert on homelessness and prevention and resolution. So they're going to walk us through what is potentially another round of Project Home Key funding and how that may relate to Nevada. And I'm sure they'll touch on the two existing and approved projects that we, the County of Marin, secured in the first round of funding. So I'm not, I should have done this ahead. I'm not sure. I'm assuming Andrew's going first. So I'll hand it off to Andrew. And if I'm wrong, he can hand it to Ashley.
It was a 50/50. I think I'm going to hand it to Ashley first and then she'll turn it back to me. Thanks.
Hi there. Thank you so much, Council, for inviting us to speak tonight. We're very happy to have the opportunity to talk with you about the potential for a second round of Project Home Key. Whether you've heard of Project Home Key or not, we'll give you the quick history for folks on the line who may not be super familiar. The first round launched last summer. We did acquire those first two properties, one in San Rafael and one in Corte Madera. Both of those properties are starting off as interim housing, which is short term emergency based housing and will transition to permanent supportive housing for a total of 66 new units of permanent supportive housing. The Corte Madera project is a converted motel for 18 units. The San Rafael project is a converted office building for 44 units. Both are currently fully operational as interim housing. And the San Rafael site is actually serving as the relocated site for the Mill Street Single Adult Homeless Shelter. While Mill Street is undergoing renovation. The governor has requested a second round of funding. The proposed budget is $750 million this time. And in anticipation of approval by the legislature, we still have to go through the legislative process. But last time, the state actually did not wait for legislative approval before launching the application period. So we are moving quickly anticipating that the same thing will happen this year. Which is why we are doing these community sessions and why we're here tonight. At our last semi annual, biannual, two years. Every other year, homeless census in January of 2019, we counted a little over 1,000 residents of Marin who were experiencing homelessness. Project Home Key is a program that gives us a chance to help end homelessness for some of those folks. As I'm sure many of you have noticed, homelessness is certainly more visible in Marin since the beginning of the pandemic. The great majority of folks who are experiencing homelessness in Marin, particularly those who are living in the encampments that are very visible, have been homeless in Marin for a very long time. Some, if maybe even most, have disabilities and need a permanent home combined with support services in order to stay stably housed. Project Home Key is a fabulous opportunity to make a significant dent in that homelessness. Marin was actually one of the only counties in California to reduce chronic homelessness from 2017 to 2019 by focusing on permanent supportive housing and by focusing on putting people in permanent units rather than on short term or emergency based solutions. And actually, in the last year, we have accelerated our progress in in placing folks who are chronically homeless, which means they have long histories of homelessness and a disability, into permanent supportive housing. In 2015, Marin County had 193 units of permanent supportive housing. In January of 2020, we had bumped that up to 514. And as of today, we are at 589 permanent supportive housing units. That's more than a 300% increase over the last six years. Part of that is due to our partnership with Marin Housing Authority, which has allocated vouchers, Section 8 vouchers on an otherwise closed waitlist for folks who are chronically homeless. And that's paired with support services from Health and Human Services and its partners are funded by Health and Human Services, largely through the Hope Missing Care Program and through Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. So I will turn it over to Andrew Henning, the Project Director with Opening Doors, which is a public private partnership of funders and policymakers across Marin focused on ending chronic and veteran homelessness.
Awesome. Thank you, Ashley. And good evening, everyone. I am going to share my screen. So pull this up for you. Let me see if I can actually present this. The bar is in the way. This is a first. Let me see. Here we go. Okay, so for tonight, as Councilmember Warnock mentioned earlier, we've done 10 of these Marin Project Home Key 2.0 info sessions over the last two weeks. So we're basically, this is the 11th. So if you didn't get to attend one yet, we're basically going to do the same presentation to make sure that you're getting the same information that everyone else has gotten. Again, I'm Andrew Henning. I'm here tonight on behalf of Opening Doors Marin. And then Ashley introduced herself. If at any point you want to reach out to us, here are our email addresses. Feel free to contact us if you have any questions or comments. So if there's anything that we talked about tonight that you know, you're marinating on, you want to, you want to have some time to think about and then get back to us, feel free to reach out afterwards as well. In addition to any comments or questions tonight. In terms of the agenda, Ashley did a great job just kind of setting up why we're here tonight and our progress over the last few years. I'm going to build on that a little bit more, provide a little bit more context. Tonight's presentation is really about Project Home Key 2.0, but we are going to touch briefly on homelessness in Marin and our strategy over the last five years. I also wanted to touch on opening doors, just to give you a little bit more background about what opening doors is. And then most of the presentation is really focused on Project Home Key, both 1.0 and 2.0. And then really time for the council's questions and the community's questions. So briefly homelessness in Marin. So just to give everyone a heads up, I have a 45 minute version of this presentation. So I'm giving you the abridged five minute version. So again, if you have questions or want to reach out, feel free to contact me or contact Ashley. So this systems change process really began about five years ago, as Ashley mentioned. And I'll save you all kind of the background, but the core insight was really that when we looked at the homeless community overall, we realized that the vast majority of our quote unquote challenges with homelessness were really stemming from a small group of people experiencing chronic homelessness. And so if you were to look at, and there have been many studies, both locally in the region, across the state and country. If you look at people, the spectrum of experiencing homelessness from people that are temporarily homeless, which is actually the vast majority of people that experiencing homelessness. It's a brief experience lasting a few short weeks or months. To then people that are episodically homeless or people that are long term chronically homeless. We find that the cost, the per capita cost of someone experiencing chronic homelessness actually rises exponentially. And both here locally and across the state, we've found that people experiencing chronic homelessness can cost communities on average $60,000 per year. And emergency services like EMS transports or other kind of emergency interventions. And I think Ashley touched on this, but the official definition of chronic homelessness is someone that's been homeless for a year or longer and has some kind of disabling condition like a behavioral health challenge, a substance abuse challenge, traumatic brain injury, chronic health issue, or oftentimes many of these challenges together. And that really speaks to, I think, the other aspect of this curve, which is really, I think, the moral ethical piece of the work that we're doing. Which is that these are really some of the most vulnerable people in our community. Studies have found that people experiencing chronic homelessness pass away on average 25 years earlier than their house peers. Not from a single night of cold or an acute weather event, but from long term chronic health issues that go untreated. And so that was really, this community that we had not previously really been super focused on became our focus in 2016. And as I said, we had a lot of great services and programs in Marin. We were helping a lot of people. We just weren't doing a great job helping this part of the curve, people experiencing chronic homelessness. So at that time, we formed a group of, again, folks from the county, folks from the cities, local service providers. We went up to Sonoma County, down to the East Bay, down to Santa Clara County and Silicon Valley. And we started to learn how other communities were working to address chronic homelessness. At the same time, we also started mapping the actual lived experience of people that were chronically homeless in our community. So the details of this chart are less important than the general theme, which is that being homeless is denoted in the middle, being housed is on the outside. And you can see that we created a very well intentioned system, but it was a very convoluted, hard to navigate system. And a lot of people that were experiencing chronic homelessness were not ending up getting into housing. And the result was that we had folks that were inherently challenging to serve, again, because of those underlying conditions that I mentioned earlier, like severe addiction issues or behavioral health challenges. And again, we had created these programs that were well intentioned, but had barriers, even small barriers that that ended up making people not successful in these programs. And so when that happened, they became more distrustful of the system. They didn't seek help. And then their situation got worse. And the result of this was that there were people when we first started, and there are still people, unfortunately, but there were people that had been homeless in Marin County for 20, 30, even some people that had been homeless for 40 years in Marin County, stuck in this cycle that wasn't working for the community and it definitely was not working for them. So what we realized from our field trips is that we didn't need another program. We didn't need a behavioral health program. We didn't need a substance abuse program. We needed an entirely new strategy or methodology for helping these folks. And from all of our different field trips, we learned about a program in San Mateo called the Homeless Outreach Team, or the HOT program for short. And there's homeless outreach teams all over the country, but this specific methodology was basically to convene all the local service providers, city, county, nonprofits that might interact with an individual experiencing chronic homelessness and then meet on a regular biweekly basis and really focus on how do we get this person housed. This methodology has actually now been named, and the San Mateo program as well, have been named a statewide best practice by the League of California Cities based on the results that we had here in Marin. And this really started as a pilot in San Rafael, focused on a dozen or so of the most visible, vulnerable, chronically homeless people in downtown San Rafael. And the result over, well, I should say first that in addition to the HOT program, we also spent a lot of time learning about housing first. And in short, housing first is the strategy of taking people experiencing chronic homelessness straight from being homeless and then putting them into permanent housing wrapped in intensive support services. And while this might sound a little bit counterintuitive, there have been many studies, there was actually recently a really thorough multi-year double blind study from UCSF that looked at housing first in Santa Clara County and found that housing first is about 200 to 300% more effective than the status quo, which is that visual I showed you earlier of the maze of different services trying to quote unquote manage homelessness instead of solving homelessness. And so with the combination of the homeless outreach team and housing first, over the first 18 months of the HOT team, we housed 23 of the most visible, vulnerable, chronically homeless people in downtown San Rafael. People that in some cases, I think we had, were really worried that we could never find a way for them to get inside again. We're actually thriving now in housing. And so that takes us to 2017. And on October 1st of 2017, we launched what's called Coordinated Entry, which is our countywide strategy for addressing homelessness. And again, there's a lot more details about this, but in short, I would encourage people that are watching tonight to check out an organization called Community Solutions and a campaign that they've created called Built for Zero. There are now 80 communities, 80 plus communities across the United States and Canada that are using that same by name list methodology that we started in San Rafael and that San Mateo was using to actually become a countywide strategy for prioritizing the most vulnerable people for housing placements. And so we, Marin County, have actually joined Built for Zero, or one of the communities. And what's been helpful is that we've seen by looking across the country at our partners, there are communities that have ended chronic homelessness. They've ended veteran homelessness. They've seen major reductions. And that was really an inspiration for us. And it's helped us to accelerate our progress over the years. And Ashley mentioned this, but the impact has been pretty significant. So from 2017 to 2019, we saw an almost 30% reduction in chronic homelessness. Since October 1st of 2017, we've now housed over 320 of the most vulnerable chronically homeless people countywide. And this next stat's a little bit out of date, unfortunately, but our retention rate has dropped to 94%. The nationwide average for housing first programs is 85% retention. So we're actually still pretty well above the national average. But this is, of all those people we've housed, people that are still housed, which is truly incredible. And at least from the data we have from San Rafael, going back to our original hypotheses about service utilization, we've seen major reductions in criminal justice involvement as well as healthcare utilization for people that have gotten housed, looking at before they were housed to then after they were housed. So the big question is how? How has this happened? And Ashley gave you a little bit of a teaser on how this worked, but the biggest way that we've really made this happen is an incredible partnership with the Marin Housing Authority. We've worked with them to pair case management, like Ashley talked about, with Section 8 vouchers. And the result is that the vast majority of the permanent supportive housing that we've created is actually scattered site rental units all over the county, from Mill Valley to Nevada, from Larkspur all the way out to Inverness. So many of the people that we've housed are actually already scattered out in our communities. And if you can't tell, that's kind of the point, is that once people are in housing, they really thrive and do well. And so that's been a huge part of our success. But relying on rental units alone is not going to be enough. So over the past few years, we've also been working to create more new actual units. One project, Victory Village in Fairfax, came online last year. We were able to carve out some units in that project for our permanent supportive housing. Right now, Homer Bound of Marin, obviously, who has a big presence in Nevada, they're currently rebuilding their Mill Street Shelter in San Rafael to re-include the shelter, but also include 32 additional units of permanent supportive housing. And these are just two examples of adding on to the rental housing, also creating brand new units. And that's also a great segue to opening doors. So in the early days of this change process, we started to form a group that we, at that time, called the Marin Chronic Homeless Action Task Force, or MCHAT. And the idea was basically, as we were learning about housing first, we were learning about the homeless outreach team and Build for Zero. We wanted to convene various stakeholders in the community, county leaders, city leaders, faith-based philanthropy business, to really educate them on how this was working across the country and really figure out how can we scale and accelerate our progress locally. And so for about two years, that was all we did, more or less, was just try to educate the group on what's working nationally and how do we do that here? And what we realized at the end of those two years is that our biggest value add as a group would be helping to create more housing. And specifically addressing the bottleneck that we had found here in Marin, which is that there are actually a lot of opportunities to rehab housing or create new housing. We just didn't have the local capital or the local money to make it happen. And so in 2019, MCHAT rebranded as Opening Doors Marin. It became a fiscally sponsored 501(c)(3) nonprofit under the Center for Volunteer and Nonprofit Leadership. And most of 2019 was actually focused on exploring the feasibility of a public revenue measure for housing. Many counties in the region and across the state have explored affordable housing measures so that they would actually be able to create more local capital for pursuing housing projects. And as was stated earlier during the council reports, you know, I think Marin County, I think we all know, we really value having local control over our housing. And so having that local funding is a great way to be able to pursue projects that make sense for our community. Ultimately, however, there was not enough political support for pursuing a public revenue measure. So in early 2020, Opening Doors shifted to focusing on a community business plan and really trying to calculate it out, what are the housing and service needs for ending chronic homelessness, ending veteran homelessness? And can we get philanthropic or other private giving to actually help meet that capital need? And so that was a plan, at least until COVID hit. And I'll talk about that in a minute. I did want to say, if you're interested in opening doors, I would encourage you to check out an organization in the South Bay called Destination Home. Destination Home is basically opening doors, maybe in 10 years. Destination Home is really that same public private partnership that's brought together city leaders, county leaders, business leaders to, they've actually helped pass an affordable housing measure in Santa Clara County. They've also brought in tens of millions of dollars from the tech sector to help with homelessness and housing. And they're also the holder of a lot of the reporting and metrics around really making sure that the community is making progress towards their goal, which is also to end chronic and veteran homelessness. So that is a good segue to Home Key 1.0. And in order to understand Home Key 1.0, you have to understand the somewhat confusingly named predecessor, Project Room Key. And basically, if you remember back to last year, March of 2020 was when shelter in place started. Within a few short weeks, the county was, or it's not the county, the state was saying, we really need to do something urgently to address and help people experiencing homelessness. There was a major fear and concern, given those underlying health issues I talked about earlier, that a breakout of COVID in the homeless community would be frankly catastrophic. And so the state came up with this program called Project Room Key, which basically allowed local communities to lease hotel and motel rooms to create what's called non-congregate shelter. Congregate shelter by comparison would basically be like a big community room with multiple cottonets. That's obviously not a good environment in airborne illness time in our community. So the idea was how do we get people into their own individual rooms? And it was short term interim housing. And so what's amazing is that almost every county in the state participated and over 22,000 people were housed through Project Room Key across the state. And given the success of that, it felt like probably a year from from April to June, but within a few short months of Project Room Key, the state announced a program called Project Home Key. And the idea with Project Home Key was, can we use this same principle of rapidly moving people into hotels and motels? Can we actually use that strategy to acquire hotels, motels, or other commercial buildings to create long term permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness? And the idea here was that the state was repurposing federal coronavirus relief funding, about $750 million of that funding. And because that was a use it or lose it funding stream, the state required that communities had to acquire, fully expend the funding for acquisition by the end of the calendar year. And that these projects had to be operational, at least 50% operational within 90 days. So it was extremely rapid turnaround. And despite those constraints, across the state, communities created almost 6,000, 6,000 units of housing serving over 9,000 people. And when you consider the fact that there are 150,000 people experiencing homelessness in California at any given time, this had a very major impact very quickly. There were, I think Ashley mentioned this, or Adam might have mentioned this, there were two Project Home Key sites in Marin County that were successfully acquired. One was 3301 Kerner, which was an office building in San Rafael with 44 units of permanent supportive housing. And then the other was what's now being called the Casa Buena, which was a motel in Corte Madera that had 19 units, 18 of which have been carved out for permanent supportive housing, and one is for a manager's unit. And at this point, I just want to acknowledge, especially, you know, joining you this evening, that this happened way faster than any of us would have ever envisioned. Thinking back to the Fairfax, the Victory Village site, that was a good example of a multi-year project that included initial conceptual buy-in from the community, going to the planning commission, iterating on initial designs, getting council approval. That process took many years. And so this, you know, we had less than six months. And so because of that rapid timeline, there was understandably a lot of concern and trepidation from the community about, is this actually a good idea? Is this going to make sense? And so I wanted to share with you that actually, subsequent to the creation of the Casa Buena in particular, the town of Corte Madera formed a community advisory committee that Opening Doors is actually helping to facilitate. But that committee is basically looking at things like, how do we make sure that there's good communication with the community? How do we look at exterior redesign options to make sure that the building fits in with the community? How do we find volunteer opportunities to get people involved? And so it's really been a way to keep that sort of community accountability and to some extent supervision in place after the launch of this site. And so I wanted to share with you this virtual ribbon cutting video that that committee put together, because I think it speaks really well to how that that project has been embraced by the community over time. So I'm going to play a short video for you right now.
On behalf of Corte Madera's elected officials, staff, and residents, I'd like to welcome you to the Casa Buena, Corte Madera's first permanent supportive housing for those that are experiencing homelessness. This was all brought together by a collaborative effort that included the County of Marin, Catholic charities, Open Door Marin, town staff, and Corte Madera residents. We're also providing monetary and in-kind donations.
Marin has worked very hard over the past three years to address our homeless population. And with the Home Key Project in Corte Madera at Casa Buena, we will be able to provide needed housing for 18 of our most vulnerable residents while wrapping all the services the county has to offer around them. I want to thank the community of Corte Madera, their city council, and the Casa Buena Steering Committee for working with the county to make this possible.
When I first heard of plans to build a homeless shelter in Corte Madera, I was very much opposed to it. It wasn't until I did a bunch of research on my own that I began to realize that permanent supportive housing can be an important solution to the homeless issue we have here in Marin County.
A safe home helps transform lives and creates essential stability, healing, independence, and dignity founded on hope. Our partnership with Marin County through Project Room Key and Home Key impacts many lives. Together, we strive to end homelessness in Marin.
From Corte Madera to Nevada, Larkspur to Inverness, we have successfully housed hundreds of our community's most vulnerable chronically homeless people. Because of projects like this and the support of community members like you, I know we can reach our goal of being the first county in the Bay Area to end chronic homelessness.
One of the ideas we had was to create welcome baskets that could be given to each resident when they move in. So we sent people shopping for everything from toothpaste to shampoo to snacks, cozy slippers, and grocery store gift cards. And the response from the community was frankly overwhelming. So many people wanted to be a part of this. It really embodies the spirit of Corte Madera as a welcoming place.
So on behalf of Corte Madera, I'd like to welcome our newest residents.
So as you can see, this has really been a project that, again, there was concern, and I don't think Scott would mind me saying this, but you know, he was someone that was very concerned about this when we originally proposed it and through the process. But over time, as he's learned about our strategy to address homelessness in the county, he's learned about permanent supportive housing, the services that go with it, and then really his involvement with this committee. It's really been a really positive experience. And I think it's really led him to endorse this. And actually, this group, they really, the hope of this group is that this could become a model for other permanent supportive housing projects, not only in the county, but even across the country. So with that, I'm going to turn to Project Home Key 2.0. And what's important, as Ashley previously mentioned, is that there, and I think Adam said this too, but there's actually no official Project Home Key 2.0 yet. Right now, all that's been proposed through the governor's budget is that there's another reallocation of funding to Project Home Key. And that's what we're calling Project Home Key 2.0. We are expecting the legislature to take action on this soon. It could happen as early as next month. And given the rapid turnaround of Home Key 1.0 from being announced in June to then a few weeks later, having the NOFA come out or the Notice of Funding Availability, we are preparing as though a NOFA could come out as early as next month. And because of that, again, there's no official Project Home Key 2.0 guidelines. So a lot of our assumptions that you'll hear moving forward are based on Project Home Key 1.0. We're assuming the same similar guidelines as before. And I just want to say again, the Home Key 1.0 process was extremely fast. It was something that none of us expected. And so because of that, because we have a little bit more lead time this time, that's really why we're doing these info sessions. Why I'm honored to be here tonight with you, because we really want to get in front of this, get community input about the process and really be more prepared, unlike last time where we had to scramble a bit. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as well. So assume state criteria. So like the first time, we're assuming that local, not, well, yeah, local governments need to be the lead applicant. So that could be a city, county, housing authority, it could also be a tribal government. There can be other partners in the application process, like nonprofit developers, even for-profit developers, service providers. But it needs to be a governmental agency that actually applies. Like last time, we're expecting the funding to be flexible for acquisition conversion of hotels, motels, other commercial sites. I did also want to note that some of the Home Key 1.0 projects included the acquisition of trailers, as an example, that could be turned into long term housing. So there is, again, a lot As an example, that could be turned into long-term housing. So there is, again, a lot of flexibility about this. And if there's specific projects people have in mind, we're happy to liaise with HCD or the state and try to get more information about, is this actually viable or not? But again, it's meant to be flexible. We're also expecting that the process is going to be fast, that we're going to have to close escrow by the end of 2021. And that like last time, we're going to have to have the site at least 50% occupied within 90 days of acquisition. And then the other thing that I haven't mentioned, but is really important and worth going into a little bit more detail is that Home Key 1.0 did have a local funding match requirement. And so the way this worked is that the Home Key subsidy is based on a per-unit acquisition cost. So for a per-unit acquisition cost of $0 to $100,000, the state fully covers the cost. From $100,000 to $200,000, however, it becomes a one-to-one match, 50 from the state, 50 locally. From $200,000 to $350,000, it drops a little bit more to a one-to-two match. So $50,000 from the state, $100,000 from the local government. So to fully max out the Home Key subsidy, if a per-unit acquisition cost was $350,000, locally, we would have to contribute $150,000 per unit. The state would contribute $200,000. And so to really make this concrete, if you were to imagine a 50-unit project costing $200,000 per unit, the state would cover $150,000 per unit, but we would have to come up with $2.5 million or basically $50,000 per unit. And what that means is that if the per-unit acquisition cost went up just $90,000 per unit, our contribution per unit would go up to $110,000 or $5.5 million. And I just want to say, this was the whole issue around which Opening Doors was founded. We don't have that kind of local capital. And so that's why Home Key itself is so important for bringing funding to our community. And it's also why the per-unit acquisition cost is very key to making these projects actually pencil out and work. So in addition to what we know from the state, we've also have some some draft local criteria. And again, this is something that we're looking for feedback on, but I'll tick through these. So the first is that we're really trying to find projects that are not in areas of concentrated poverty. Part of that is just, you know, morally principally, we're trying to not crowd low-income housing into already low-income neighborhoods. So I think that's something that we're looking to just, we want to have housing that's distributed throughout the community. As I say in the second bullet, we want to have a portfolio of projects that represents housing throughout the county. The other part is operational. And so most affordable housing projects, especially what we've seen in Marin, are financed by using those Section 8 vouchers that we talked about earlier and what's called project basing them to the unit. So basically, rather than assigning a voucher to an individual, you're assigning the voucher to the room. And what's important is that that's not free housing. What it means is that someone that has a voucher, either a regular rental voucher or a project-based voucher, they contribute 30% of their income to whatever their income is towards housing, and then the subsidy covers the rest up to market rate. Why that's important is that that additional subsidization helps cover things like the operation costs. So that could be security, it could be maintenance, it could be property management, and then it also covers the services. So the reason that these sites work is because of the supportive services. And so that's why having the vouchers makes that funding model much more sustainable over time. So that's very key. The other thing I wanted to add is that we, the Home Key funding is based on acquisition. It's not covering a lot of rehab cost. And so the way, especially as a very concrete example, 3301 Kerner, that was not previously a, you know, residential building. That was an office building. And so there's going to need to be substantial rehab to make that actually suitable for housing. And so we're somewhat dependent in terms of funding on what's called low-income tax credits to make that rehab feasible. And in order to access low-income tax credits, we need the participation of nonprofit housing developers. And so based on their own cost structures, they typically are only able to take on projects that are about 45 units, large or bigger. And I don't want to say that that's a hard and fast, because there could be projects that are smaller and the funding structure is different. But generally, in order to get nonprofit developer participation and also to make the services work, we need slightly larger projects. So so that's also something that we're looking at. And then again, based on the subsidy match, we're really looking for projects that are less than $350,000 per unit and really less than $250,000 per unit. And then lastly, we're not looking for projects that are in the middle of nowhere. And this is something that the state actually looked for as well. They gave additional points in the Home Key application to projects that were integrated near groceries and transit and other services. So that's also a plus that we're looking for. So in terms of next steps, we've already completed our 10 community sessions. The county is in the process of finalizing a request for interest. So this would be a formal solicitation that would go out to property owners across the county. Through venues like this and our, and a survey that I'm about to describe, we're trying to collect community feedback about our draft criteria. So as we're looking at projects, you know, what what is the community feeling like would be the most impactful way to go? We'd love to hear from you. And then as projects are coming in, we've already gotten a number of projects submitted. We're reviewing their viability and checking with our local funders, with nonprofit developers, to see if there's actually a chance. And some of that stuff is just very basic, like some submissions are, I'll give you an example from San Rafael. You should buy a building near Lucas Valley. That's very vague. That's kind of hard to work with, but there there are also more specific projects. And so part of it is, you know, are these buildings actually for sale? How much do they cost? Can they be occupied by the end of the year? So a lot of the criteria stuff that I talked about before. And so again, we don't, there is no official Home Key 2.0 NOFA, but we're trying to prepare now and be ready when that comes out. So with that, I do have a link to a survey and I know this format's a little bit different. So I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing and I can either send that survey to Adam, if I want to send it to you, if you want to send it out through the city's communication channels, or I can drop it in the chat, whatever's easier. But we do have a survey if people would like to provide feedback. And with that, that concludes the presentation.